I would like to call meeting to board.
Where are you?
Yep. I asked if we all sit down.
Oh.
But I...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I, um, we do not have anybody in the open forum. So I'd like to invite Wendy Elasy to speak. That is because she has a lot of information to share with us and she needs to adapt to town hall to board. And we are being reported by Westboro to board. So Wendy.
Well, good afternoon and thank you for having me. Um, that was a good introduction. Wendy Elasy, chief assessor. And I went around and I passed out some information on the exemptions that we have to offer. And a lot of them are age and means, mostly age-based, um, and then means-based. So the first one I wanted to discuss a little more at length than the others is this here. It's the means-based senior exemption. This sun sets after three years. So we have about two more years. This was a, this was voted at town meeting and it is for residents who are eligible and get the circuit breaker through the state. And then the town of Westboro will match that number based on the qualifications in this pamphlet here. So far this year, we have given back to people in need of $25,000 just on this circuit breaker. So this is something that I'd really like to promote and get it out into the community because it's new and it's a meaningful number. A lot of these are lower numbers, you know, up to $375 to $350. But the circuit breaker is significant. It can be $2,500 to $3,500. And not that every little bit doesn't help, but this is meaningful. So if you had, probably haven't had a chance to just kind of review the eligibility. But the first is basically, did you receive the circuit breaker income tax credit? And then you go down to the qualifying of real property. And then you have the, by a single applicant who's 65 years or older. Now here's one that could disqualify some. The applicant has to be, has to have been domiciled and owned a home in Westboro for 10 consecutive years. Yeah. So we do have a lot of residents who qualify, but unfortunately it disqualifies a portion of the residents. And then there's also number five, where the maximum assessed 2024 value cannot be greater than 10% above the town's average single-family assessed value. So for this particular, for the $722,000, you can't be assessed greater than about $800,000, your assessed value. So, but I always tell people, if you look at this and you don't think you qualify, ask anyway. You never know. You know, there might, there might have been a slight change. There might have been something that you think disqualifies you, but we can speak with the board and, you know, see if they've come across a specific situation. So this is definitely something that I'd like to put on the Council on Aging's website, if that would be okay. Maybe along with the senior work-off program. Senior work-off program has increased this year. It's 133 working hours. And it has gone up from $1,750 a year to $1,995 a year. So even with a combination of both of those, you know, say you qualified for the circuit breaker and then you do a work-off, that can be a significant, meaningful savings for people who are having a hard time paying their tax bills. So does anybody have any questions on the circuit breaker that we just reviewed? I'm learning as we go as well. So I haven't been through an exemption.
So you mentioned the word circuit breaker, but it's not mentioned here.
So if you go...
We're talking about this.
Oh, I'm sorry. I looked at the wrong page.
Yep, not a problem. Not a problem.
Oh, yeah. Okay, sorry. Thanks.
And importantly, the deadline file for this is April 1st.
That would be for the next fiscal year or...
That would actually be for this year. Yes. Yep. And some people have already received it because it's based on your 2024, um, or 2023 tax return. See, I'm learning here.
So it's a fiscal year distribution, but it's based on the calendar year income.
Correct. Yes. Yes.
Yeah. That's a little confusing.
Yep.
And just a reminder, when we did the senior needs assessment and one of the items in the implementation plan, we heard a lot of concern about the ability for older adults to age in place. And part of, one of the items in the implementation plan was to further identify any resources, any exemptions that could help reduce the tax burden and hopefully enable individuals to stay in their homes longer, as well as to do a better job or increase efforts to promote and make sure that there's greater participation in programs for those who are eligible.
Yes.
The question I'd be consecutive. That's just in Westboro, but it could be multiple, you know, different homes. In other words, if someone sold their big house and moved into a smaller house, but was still in Westboro for over 10 years, would that still qualify?
By reading this, that is my interpretation. The applicant has been domiciled and owned a home in Westboro for at least 10 years. Yes. Thank you for clarifying that.
Could I ask one?
Sure.
What if an individual had lived in Westboro for, say, 30 years, moved away and came back to live in Westboro, but in the most recent time has not lived in town for 10 years?
So I think that that's something I mentioned at the beginning of this. If you don't know or you think something disqualifies you, come and talk to me. I can ask the board and maybe they would allow that because you were a resident for 30 years.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Does anybody else have any questions on this particular one? No? Okay. So I do want to let you know, and Kim and I spoke about this. Confidentiality is huge and it's very difficult for people to come forward and ask for something. So some ways that I've, in my previous positions in other communities, I will go to someone's home and meet with them so they don't have to come into town hall. A, if they can't come into town hall, that they don't have the ability. Or B, they don't want people to see them and ask, what are you doing here? So I have no problem going to someone's house and assisting in identifying what they could qualify for. Another thing with public outreach is the people we're reaching, we might not be reaching the person in need, but we're reaching friends and neighbors. Right? So you're all sitting here getting this information and you might know somebody who's struggling. So you can go to them and say, this is what I've heard. You should ask the assessors about this. You may be able to qualify for something. Because everybody wants to age in place. And it's not just Westboro. I know for sure it's Massachusetts. You know, this has become an issue and I'm assuming that's why they had approved the circuit breaker, the match of the circuit breaker. So it's public outreach, making people feel comfortable. I'd have no problem meeting somebody if they don't want me to come to their home to a coffee shop or meet them here or however they'd like to do it. And it is confidential.
I missed the first part of the question. You just made a comment. The match of the circuit breaker.
So that is, for this particular exemption that we just reviewed, the town matches what the state has given you for a circuit breaker, if you qualify. Yeah.
If you qualify for the circuit breaker.
If you qualify for the circuit breaker.
And the taxes.
Right. And there's then the eligibility here. Right.
Excuse me.
Yes, sure. So I'm relatively new in Massachusetts. What's a circuit breaker?
So a circuit breaker is, um, it's basically filed on your tax return and it's a tax credit.
A refundable...
What's that term referring to? What does it mean? A circuit breaker?
A circuit breaker?
No, we're in a home.
It really doesn't mean anything. But it's the term that they use.
It's the term that they use.
I'd like to ask because I was very confused.
Yes.
It means nothing.
If you're a renter, you get 10%...
No, I just want to know what the phrase, the words mean.
Oh.
I know what the real words mean.
There has to, you know, I'm going to ask around because that's a good question. Now I want to know. I know you won't fill it, we won't fill this.
I tried looking it up.
Oh, you can't find it.
It's just a name.
Just basically something that they called it 100 years ago or whatever.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. No problem. So that's really what I want to emphasize is if you know somebody in need and they're reluctant, it's confidential. It's there for a reason. And, um, you know, if they qualify, that's great. They can get some help.
I don't think we have to vote or anything, but I think we agree that we should put this on our website as well as yours. Or at least, you know, have a reference to it and point to your website.
Absolutely. Okay.
Yeah, so you and I, Kristin and I can work on that together.
Yeah.
Okay. When you mentioned both the work-off program and the circuit breaker.
Well, that's already there.
Oh, it is? The work-off? The other one? Okay.
Sure. So the senior work-off program, I mentioned that briefly. Kristin, you probably know a little bit more. But if somebody is interested in working and you can work up to 133 hours, volunteer, well, not really volunteering, because you're working.
You get work.
And I think the hourly rate is about $15. $15 an hour. And you can work as little or up to 133 hours a year.
On the page of our newsletter.
Oh, is it here? Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Okay, let's see. So you must be the owner and occupant of the home as is your primary residence. You must be 60 or older or a veteran of any age. And you must be a resident of Westboro for a minimum of five years. So there's that resident requirement to go. And you can pick up applications in the veterans office. You can pick them up in the assessor's office. Or you can download them off of the town website in the Council on Aging. You can pick them, pick up, pick up the applications here. And they're due back to Kristin or to the Council on Aging by Monday, February 3rd. Because February 1st is a weekend. So there, Kristin, you have a list of the needs of departments and who would want and what work needs to be done.
Yeah, the department has filled out an application as well to request specific positions and they might have. We've had quite a few applications returned already.
Right. Right.
So a couple of things. This year, we extended the period for individuals to submit applications. I think in the past, it had been about a two-week window. We gave it over a month. We thought it was important for, you know, right after the holidays, starting to get the word out, give people a little more time to get that application back in. Again, trying to make sure we get maximum interest and response. And then what we do is we try to match the application. If people indicate their interests, their skills, we do try to match then somebody's sort of skills and interests with the needs that the different departments have expressed. So it's a wide range of opportunities. And this is also one, I would say, if you're not sure, by all means, submit. If you were to get paired with something that you weren't keen on. You know, we try to work with people, but you certainly, by submitting the application, you're, you're not fully committed.
Right.
And I do think that typically we, the applications come in, they're reviewed, and typically it's early March when people have the ability to start on their assignments. And again, the timing of the assignments really depends on the role. In some cases, it can be spread out over, you know, March to late fall. Other cases, it might lend itself to concentrating the hours in a certain window. So it really, there is a lot of flexibility.
But there has been one deadline, right? The end date. The end date is mid-November or something like that.
Right. Yes.
Which has caused, you know, some issues at times when we would have liked to have had volunteers here right through to the end.
Right. But we can't. That's not, that's not the town's requirement. That's just programmatically in order to, yeah. It has to end.
At a state, so we can't extend it beyond that.
Unfortunately.
And the other thing we need to be clear, people who participate in the program for the purposes of the program, they're, they're considered employees. They cannot continue and volunteer in the same role. So once their 133 hours are exhausted, you can't, departments are well aware. They can't continue to keep. Many times, people like what they're doing and want to help. So they'll say, hey, I'm willing to stay on and volunteer. We can't do that because they are considered employees. So that runs afoul of some other, some other things. So I just like that to be out there because it's well-meaning when people offer that.
Of course.
And we need to say, no, sorry. Thank you. But that's why.
Alma always mentioned you can't work in the same organization or department that you are a member of a council. Right.
I'm sorry. I thought you were going to say you can't, you can't volunteer in the same capacity. I don't, I want to be clear. It doesn't preclude people from volunteering in another capacity in town. It's just if you are a greeter at town hall, once you've done your 133 hours, you can't continue to volunteer as a greeter.
No, I got that.
Yes.
But for example, a member of the Council on Aging can volunteer at the senior center. Excuse me. Put work at the senior center. One of these work-off tasks.
That makes sense because I think sometimes there's overlap in terms of what the two positions and responsibilities. And I think just to avoid any real or perceived conflict, that seems like a reasonable...
That was my own standing.
Yep. That's a good point.
Another point I'd like to make is never has the list of people come before the council.
No.
This strictly confidential. And you may get further down the line. Somebody may say, we were able to help 100 seniors. That's all we need to know. It means the program is working. People's dignity is in place. So this is, the discussions here are very limited.
So you do know, Linda, that every employee of the town is published in the annual report and the amount that they earn. So that...
But that doesn't have any...
But doesn't say what you're doing or what...
Right. That's totally separate. It's just, don't think that you come in here next month or the following month and Kim or somebody is going to say, oh, yeah, we need to be... Because it doesn't work that way. It is strictly confidential. And I would like to thank, at this time, Kristin for coming in to sit with us and help with the notes. I'm doing this time. So that is appreciated. And we do have one guest.
Yes. And Linda, I'm happy to, I am happy to do the minutes. So if you want, I'm, yeah.
Would you like to speak to the council?
Oh, I'll just say, I'm glad to be here today and to see everyone. For those that don't know me, I'm the current chair of the select board, Patrick Welch. And I just wanted to catch up with what was going on in the Council on Aging. I saw some interesting topics today. So I just wanted to come in and listen in. So thank you, Linda, for allowing me to introduce myself.
You're welcome.
You're welcome to sit here.
No.
Thank you. You're welcome to some chocolate.
He doesn't want to be that.
That? Dangerous. Thank you.
Yeah. Absolutely.
One of the other things we talked about is Wendy is interested in doing a lunch and learn to get into more detail about exemptions.
Yes.
And I think to her point earlier, the target audience is more than just the individuals who themselves may qualify, but it's also to get word out in the community. So caregivers and friends and neighbors are also aware. So, you know, there may be a point in time where someone doesn't have a need or doesn't qualify. And then, you know, a few years later, something's different and they do. So I think some of it is just having, building that knowledge base that these programs exist and we truly do want to maximize participation.
Yes.
So that's to be scheduled at some point in the future. But we thought a lunch and learn might be a good opportunity.
Yes. Definitely. Definitely. So there, go ahead.
I was just going to say, are there any other questions for Wendy? Because she cannot stay to the end of the meeting. So would you have any...
I haven't turned on to the second page. Were you going to cover the second page?
So I was going to, yes, a brief overview of the exemptions. And so I have passed this out. I think everybody has a copy of this. And this just gives you the basic qualifications and what exemptions are available through the assessor's office. One that I want to discuss a little, with a little more detail is second-down deferral, the 41A. And you must have lived in Massachusetts for the preceding 10 years and owned and occupied a property in Massachusetts for five to 10. This is a program, the maximum income is $40,000. This is where you can defer part or all, if you qualify, your taxes. And upon transfer of the property, the town is paid back the taxes that were deferred. And this has helped, I know over my career, a lot of people have been able to age in place because they were allowed to defer and able to defer. Some people choose to defer 50% of their taxes. Some people choose to defer the full amount of taxes. And then when your house sells, the town gets the first payment back. What would preclude you is if you had a mortgage, if you have a mortgage on your property, the mortgage company would have to sign off that we, that the town gets their money first. So there have been a handful of occasions that have come across. The mortgage companies won't do that because they want their money first. So there are some situations where people wouldn't qualify even if they met these parameters here. But it's a very good program. And if you can save $10,000, not really save, but defer, defer, you know, for 10 years, $100,000 will go back to the town and then the remaining profit goes to the seller. So it is a good program. One thing that, when people hear that the town is putting a lien on their property, it makes them very uncomfortable. They hear lien and they say, forget it. I don't want to do it. But, you know, it is a lien that has to be paid back only when the property transfers. So you're not going to get to a point where you have to sell your house because you have to give us back our money. It's not a reverse mortgage. It's not a, it's, it's nothing like that. You're not going to lose your home because you have this lien on your property and you owe the town these back taxes. So I do try to work hard explaining it, showing examples and just kind of alleviating that reaction to hearing you have a lien on your property. Because no one wants to hear that. Right? And it deters some people from doing that.
Does this none under national assets mean they can't have any assets other than their home?
There's no asset restriction. Correct. Yep. And again, you can do as much as you want. You can defer as much as you want. So that's, I'm pointing that one out because, like, we're talking about, like, very meaningful ones, like the circuit breaker is a higher amount of deferring your taxes. That can really ease up some of the burden. So we have here also the 17D, which is, as you can see, age 70 or older, a widow, widder, or minor child with no income limit, maximum assets. And that's generally excluding the home, the maximum asset, of $50,077. It's low. It's $175 exemption, but it can increase to $350. And then we have the 41C. And that is single, age 65 or older. Maximum income is $25,038 with a maximum asset of $50,077. And that's $1,000. And it can increase up to $2,000. And that would be based on a board, a board vote. And they would probably look at the, at the income to determine if there's a greater need of up to $2,000. And then the 41C, you can see the maximum income for, let's see here, so, yes. So you can deduct from your income $5,563 for a single person and $8,480 for a couple. So you would, you would, under the maximum income here, the $37,558, if you were married, you can deduct, you know, let's just say you had $50,000. You can deduct, or $45,000. You could deduct the $8,480, which would bring your income lower to qualify.
So assets, it would include anything at all? I mean, IRAs?
Correct.
Bank accounts of any kind?
Right. Vehicles, second homes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All those things, yeah.
Well, they want to, you know, it's needs-based, and so they just want to make sure the need, the state puts these requirements to make sure the need is really there.
I presume there's no, no place that you have people that are qualified? The names are people that are qualified for any of these credits?
Not to the public. No, no.
No, I know, not to the public, to you?
Yes, we do. Yes.
Are you asking if there's a more global way to identify individuals?
Oh, no, no. What we do is, if you have ever received an exemption from us, we will send you an application and remind you. And that's, people forget, you know, and they don't think about it. So we'll send out a reminder. If we don't receive it back, we'll call them and make sure they don't miss the deadline. So we track it that way. And, you know, if they don't qualify for this year, they may qualify for the following year, so...
And then we presume that there are people there that do qualify that have a lien?
Yes. Yes, absolutely.
There's no way to reach to them?
Well, that's in part what we're trying to do, is identify additional ways to get out into the, to the public. You know, we do try to get word out, for example, you know, individuals who may be availing themselves of other services, things like the food pantry. I think we try to work through some of the houses of worship. We, and that's our point, is we are trying to identify more places in the community where even if we're not reaching the individuals themselves, we may be reaching someone who is aware of their circumstances or might not have all the detail, but could take the information to them.
Yes, yes. And whenever I come across, I'm often approached with questions about their taxes and tax amounts. And if I, if I meet somebody who I think may be in need, I will contact the Council on Aging and just make sure that they're aware. You know, if it looks that someone's in trouble. I've had people approach me in my career that they're going to go, be entering into a reverse mortgage situation. And we certainly don't control or tell people what to do, but we try to educate and let them know. I've seen people lose their houses because they've entered into reverse mortgages. So things like that, I, you know, we really try to keep our pulse on what the residents need. And, you know, rather than doing a reverse mortgage, maybe you qualify for a defer, and you're saving $1,000 a month on paying your taxes and deferring them with no interest, I believe. I don't know how they do it here, but I don't believe that they're, that we charge interest on that money either.
So you do not?
I don't believe, I'll have to check that. I heard that. But I want to, I'll confirm it. I'll confirm.
That was, you mentioned that that was a question I'd been asking for.
Yes, yes. I know some communities have charged up to 8%. In one community I worked in, I actually did a warrant article and I had it changed to 4%. That was as low as they were willing to go. And then in another community that I worked in...
Still block?
Yeah. They go by, like, the Federal Reserve rate, which ends up to be, like, 1, I think it was, like, 1.75% or something. It's not much, you know, so... I, for some reason, I thought I had heard. I've heard a lot in the past six weeks, but I don't know. But I'm pretty sure, because I was surprised by it, that there, there's either no interest or a very, very minimal interest that would have to be paid back to the town.
I believe in the state of Massachusetts, if a veteran dies in a home and leaves a wife, she no longer has to pay the realistic taxes on the home.
Is that in the line of duty?
No, it is not. I don't know. I don't know if that's a disabled veteran or a, just a non-disabled veteran, but I know there is, there is provision at the state.
There are a number of veteran-specific benefits, and maybe what would make sense is when Wendy does a luncheon learn that we ask the veteran director to come and speak to the veteran-specific exemptions. And sometimes there's overlap, but that would...
Because I do have a friend in Southborough whose husband died. He was disabled, and she no longer has to pay her real estate taxes. And it is a state program.
I've heard that before, too.
So here on that sheet that I had given you, it lists under disabled veterans, it goes 22 and 22A through F. And it, less than 100%, so... Yeah, so I could look into that.
They've expanded the eligibility for the veteran's benefits over the past several years. There've been several iterations, and they continue to make it, to include more veterans. So I think it's a great idea to have Jeff maybe participate. Jeff's our, Jeff Burrows, our Veterans Leadership Director, if he could speak to some of those.
Yeah, and another, another thing that, in part, with part of this is they just passed the Heroes Act through the state, and that allows the disabled veterans to not have to pay excise tax. And so they had done it midway through the year. And so in our office, we went back, we identified who would be eligible, and they received a refund. And then going forward, what we'll do is make sure that everybody knows this and try to identify as many veterans that would qualify for that benefit as well. But I think, to Kim's point, I think it would be great if we could all, you know, do a presentation, maybe a slideshow presentation, a little more than this, right? And...
Over the years, John has come to year to do a presentation, sometimes on his own, like a luncheon learn.
Right.
And occasionally, like, with the police and the, with the chief, he's...
Absolutely.
So he probably already has the slide deck.
Oh, maybe he already does. I'm sure he does. I'm sure he does, yeah. So I can ask him for that. So there are, there are exemptions that people can qualify for. There is help out there. Unfortunately, there are limits as to how much we can help and who's eligible. But if we can just get the word out there, I think that that's the most important thing that we can do and make sure that the people that are in need get the heck they need. And I'm assuming with Kristen, you know, if someone comes to you, you could point them in my direction and vice versa.
Right, exactly. And we're put together with that and outreach.
And the outreach is huge. And if it means every quarter, and it gets exhaustive that I come, and we get it, you know, I can do that as well, however you want me to, however you need me to get the word out is fine. And I'll have, once I go through one round of this, I'll have a better handle on everything I'm trying, so... So I don't know if you guys have any other questions. I mean, unless you want me to go line by line, it's up to you.
And again, these documents are available on the assessor's webpage, and there's actually links so that you can click and get more information, see copies of applications. So to the extent that you're able to share the information and help spread the word, appreciate you doing so.
Yes. And I brought some business cards. Actually, Kristen, I should, I could probably give them to you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
My cards and our administrative assistant, Liz Share. She runs a lot of these programs as well. And she's happy, you know, she offered to go to people's homes and meet with people, see if they're eligible, so... So do you have any, anything else for me, or will I see you at the luncheon learn? Will I be invited back?
Thank you, that was great.
All right, well, I appreciate you listening and having me. And Kim, thank you for inviting me. All right. Well, enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. So nice meeting you. Yes, my pleasure. It was my pleasure.
Wendy has a party gift. You get to take a chocolate.
I do? Do you know, these are my guilty pleasure. They're my favorites.
Oh, but there you go.
Oh, I thank you very much.
It's not easy.
No. I know, it is. It is. Thank you. Thank you very much. Take care.
Bye.
Thank you. I think it's time to go back up to the community center.
Sure, sure. We'll circle back up to the community center. I think as most of you know, because I saw a number of you in the audience, last Wednesday night, our architect, Joel Bargman, gave a presentation. It was a joint meeting of the Select Board and the Municipal Building Committee. The latest, he had some great renderings based on the design work and then was able to provide cost estimates based on that preferred design. So this is one of the deliverables that we had been talking about and had identified for early January. So I know several folks were there.
That was my move day, Kristen. I was just there.
Not, if you weren't there, that's fine. The good news is Westboro TV recorded it, so you could certainly catch it online and watch it. It was a good presentation. I thought it was a good presentation. Joel does a really nice job, and I think he was really able to... Some of the new, I think the design reflects what we've been talking about, but I think it was just the way he included the renderings and laid it out. It's, for me, it was very easy to visualize what this concept could look like when it comes to fruition. I guess...
Very nice, very nice presentation. My one, right, not of the presentation, but the fact that, on the website, as of Wednesday at least, I haven't checked since, we still didn't have the updated information. Because most of what he showed, we had already been presented at our Tuesday morning meetings, and none of it was posted. Nothing on the website beyond the October presentation.
Let me double check. I thought it had made it up there, so let me figure out if it landed.
So I hope that last Wednesday's presentation, if that gets up there, that's now the latest.
Yeah.
Can you get, do you know if that's up there? Like, I haven't checked since last Wednesday's meeting.
I haven't checked to verify, but I thought I actually saw Kristy posting it. So I, but I'll verify that it's up there, yeah. So one of the things that, the way the process works is the architects work with cost estimators, who, based on the detail that's provided, they are able to identify the, what they expect to be the construction costs. Keep in mind, the project has to go out to bid. We have to follow procurement laws. We have to put out very detailed specifications, and then we get the bids back. And ultimately, that's what we go with. It's low bid.
And right now, the bid is just for phase one?
We don't have the bid documents developed, but that's what we've talked about doing, is bidding out, yeah, the initial phase. Yes, yep. So that cost came in at just under $10 million, and that assumes, had we proceeded with bringing the project to town meeting this spring and anticipating going out and having the construction start in May of this year. So part of the presentation, he talked about the escalators by delaying the project. So I think what we talked about last time was the board, the Select Board voted to hold off until at least the fall special town meeting to bring the project forward, potentially later, could be next March. We don't have an answer to that yet. We did talk to the architect subsequent to the Wednesday night presentation, just to firm up timeline. So the idea is, before we bring the project to town meeting to ask for funding, we would have gone through that bid process and would have those firm bid numbers. So if the decision is made to do that in the fall, we would need to, it would be early summer when we would need to look to start that bid process. So we're just trying to sort of bookend the timeframe. So that's basically where it stands.
I thought the decision to delay at least until the fall was already made.
It was. The decision was made to delay at least until the fall, but beyond that, we don't know. At this point, no decision has been made if it's bringing it forward in the fall or after the fall. So if it were to be the fall, just the, just try, there's a window. You need the lead time. The bid process can typically take, you know, two, two-plus months. So one of the other things that we talked about, or we, Joel talked about, there are a couple of items that we've packaged outside of the construction bid costs, one of those being repairs to the pool so that we could potentially have that work done early or probably late spring into the summer. And that's based on the pool repair costs, which are estimated to be about $406,000, are in the capital plan. So that's being brought forward as a capital project and would be voted on at town meeting in March. So one of the things we're working right now with the recreation director is to really understand programmatically, operationally and programmatically how the pool would be used, looking at potentially outsourcing. So we don't have all of those answers yet, but we're looking at that. One of the things that we do know is, I think it came up here in the conversation, and feedback was given at the various community input sessions, the scope of work for the repairs do, not deepen, shorten? Or it would be the opposite of deepen?
Make it more shallow.
Make it more shallow, thank you. By, I think it's six to eight inches maybe, which gives the pool better, makes it, it's used better suited for things like aerobics, water aerobics classes, so...
I'd really like to see that, you know, what expert, you know, came up with that. I mean, what is the background of that? Just this morning, I was talking to a woman who just recently retired and was looking to do some volunteer work. And it happened that she was a user, subscriber, whatever you call it, of the Boston Sports Club right till when they closed. And she said she saw the pool being used right to the very end by seniors and also by children, but saw seniors and adults. She thought the height seemed normal and appropriate.
Yeah, so there's a couple pieces to that. We have the architectural firm relied on some experts who are in that area, as well as then the cost estimates, estimates came from firms that specifically deal with pools.
Why does it need to be made more shallow is the question. It sounded like it was, it was appropriate.
Yeah, I think it was used, but I think you can get greater use out of it. But the thought, the thought there was you can get greater and expand use by making it more, more shallow.
Shallower.
Is there a report, though, that defines what that means?
Guido, I don't have it. I think we were relying on the industry experts, if you will, but we can certainly follow up and try to get more information. I think the idea, too, is I know there were youth using it for swimming lessons, but we were also talking about the use of the pool might be a little bit different under our, as a, under the recreation facility. And I just, I think, you know, safety is an issue as well, so...
All right, I just want to understand that a little bit.
And my suspicion is that there's a range of depths that make it suitable for that type of activity, so...
Kristen, I thought we were told the pool had been repaired and was being used. That's not correct? Was the leak fixed?
There...
There was a leak. Is that, was that fixed a while ago?
We drained the pool, before the town purchased the building, we had the pool drained.
Oh, then it's not leaking.
Part of this was the need...
If it is, it's really a problem.
Yeah, part of this was the need to do more thorough inspections of the pool. The pool was in use up until the point at which Boston Sports Club shut down. So it was a viable, but obviously... so it was a viable, but obviously 20, I think it's about 20-plus years old. So in the course of conversations, we thought it was prudent to have it drained, understanding that it might sit vacant for a period, and that would allow us to do inspections so that we could do the work, especially contemplating doing other work in the building, it seemed to make sense.
Do we have any approximate timeline to finish the pool?
Yes. We are bringing the project forward at town meeting in March, which is a $406,000 funding request through the capital project. And that's being, the proposed funding source is free cash, so there's not an impact on the tax bill. But the timeline after that would be, once it's approved, because it's approved using free cash, we could start the work immediately.
Do we know how long that work is going to take approximately?
I don't know. I don't know.
Just a liner and then have to make it shallower.
But there's more work that needs to be done, Guido, that has to get under it. So I don't think that, yeah, I think the extent of the work, it, my understanding is it made sense to package it the way it's being proposed.
And there was one question, I think, from Shelby in the board meeting in regards to saltwater versus chlorine treatment. And I think John was going to take that back and see what that cost might be. So I'm not sure if that number might change depending on that, and so...
So the, yeah, that was asked, and then... There's something else that's been mentioned about it.
So is it saltwater or freshwater?
Yeah, right now, it's not, it's not set up on the saltwater. Yeah, so they were going to determine what the investment might be and do a return on investment if you were to switch.
And Kim, that sports club was open for 20 years?
I don't know.
Over, I'd say over 15.
I think the pool was about 20 years old.
Yeah, but no, eventually, yeah, you have to do maintenance.
Yeah.
I'd say that's a long time.
Yeah. The other question that's come up, and I've heard it answered incorrectly, so maybe just to be very clear, owning and operating a pool does not impact the town's insurance rates. There's been statements expressed that this will drive up our insurance. The town, we have property liability and casualty insurance, casualty. It does not, so I just want to...
Because in a house, it does.
But it does not for the town.
Interesting.
It does not.
Swing at your own wrist, huh?
So that's one of the projects that we're bringing forward, as well as additional projects to do some work on the rooftop units. And some of this timing is related to the availability of incentives through the utilities. And so that will be, that will be an article coming forward at town meeting as well. And the architect was very helpful in being able to carve out some projects that, when you do a big construction project, you have some, some aspects of it. You need to have an architect watching it. You have an owner's project manager, who are really the eyes and ears for the town. So there are certain aspects that wouldn't make sense to carve off into these smaller pieces, but the things that we're bringing forward do lend themselves to doing is, I'm not saying that $400,000 isn't significant, but a smaller bite, if you will. They don't require the same level of oversight when the work's being done.
The presentation is on the website.
Thank you. Thanks.
Right, please.
And we can make some paper copies available as well, if that's helpful for folks. So as of right now, I just, that's pretty much, we have the pretty drawings, the cost estimates, and then I think as the board meets over the coming month, we'll have a better sense of the timeframe.
Kim, you said the $406,000 for the pool come out of free cash, no tax implication from the town. I don't recall about the rooftop.
So...
I remember all the incentives. I thought they did a great job with getting incentives. I don't remember what the bottom line was.
I don't either.
Okay, I feel better now.
Because some of it is, well, this is the, this is always the challenge. Even though we're going to get money back, we have to have the full amount of the project available.
Right.
So I believe we were looking at use, identifying free cash, knowing that we basically have to commit and have those funds available, but ultimately, we will not expend the full amount in that, once you get the...
Once you get money back, okay.
It's, it's always tricky, because even though we know we won't spend all of that on the books, it's still going to look like we could.
Sure. But the plan is to take it out of free cash also?
That is my understanding. I think we're just, the latest version, version one, I think, of the warrant is on the website, and I think it's included in that.
Kim, I just have a follow-up question, if I may? Does that follow? The pool pack piece was also an open item, wasn't it? Like, that was gonna, that might change the cost of the upper parts. I think they were really doing more research into that as well.
And you know, that reminds me, I had no clue what you meant by that, a pool pack.
Yeah, my understanding is what it does is it, it can provide extra heating source for the water itself, so the water can be heated, but it's also to siphon out the air in the space.
Okay.
So it's, you know, if you're in a chlorine pool area, you ever been into an indoor chlorine pool?
Oh, yes.
It's very saturated, so it's to help that part of it. It's a special unit to do that type of work.
Okay.
So. Kim, you know more than me.
No, that's my, my layman interpretation of it, is it's just a different rooftop unit, because you're dealing with more smells and heat. You need more control.
The good news is it's more efficient, so it uses some of that heat that it produces to regenerate and heat up the water in the pool. So in theory, it's more green, right?
I think we all know the pool and the new center is an ongoing project. This time, if you are willing, Kim, I'd like to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the recruitment update, please.
Sure. So I think when we last met in early December, we talked about the process for the recruitment and that we had identified, we'd hold a couple of interview panels. We have representation from the council identified. We posted the position in early December, and our hope was to potentially review resumes in early January. But we acknowledged with the holidays in there, it can sometimes slow things down. So we have not yet begun the process, I think, within the next week to two weeks. Just, I feel like we did get that lull over the holidays, and so we want to make sure. You know, we had refreshed postings, so just to make sure we have as broad of an applicant pool, it was, in our estimation, worth delaying it by two weeks, so.
Have you gotten applicants?
We do have applicants, yes.
Do you know how many?
Off the top of my head, I didn't check this morning, so.
More than two, or less than?
I think so. So just, I think we had hoped, but we knew that might be overly ambitious to do interviews. I think we talked about potentially start the review process, the initial, that first full week in January. So I guess we're not too far off, because that was just last week, but...
You don't need to give names of either any existing employees?
I can't address that. No, no, that's not something.
I don't know if I can, can I look at the recruitment online, where you actually posted?
Yes, if you go to the town's website, it's on the, on the, under the town manager's page, there's a human resource page, and it is under employment opportunities.
I'm not applying. I just was curious.
I think we had shared, I thought we had shared the ad, but maybe, maybe we didn't.
Well, I was curious about if it said anything as to timing, because if we really didn't do anything the last couple of weeks, are people waiting for some sort of an answer?
Right.
Like, we received your resume, but...
Yeah, no, we do. We, people get an acknowledgement when they submit it through the town. And then we updated the ones on the Mass Municipal Association and the Mass Council on Aging.
Okay.
We amended it.
Thank you.
So I would anticipate within the next week to two that we begin that review process.
Okay. Is there another position going to be?
Yes. Stephanie Keen has given her notice that she has accepted a position in another community, and she will be with us through... I think she will work through Saturday, February 1st, because that's the next, there's a scheduled caregiver respite program that Saturday that she committed to staffing. So that will be her last day with us. So we will, yeah, we will work to get that posted. And again, we refreshed the opening for the minibus driver, and I think we've seen, and it's... And this happens with many positions. You can post and not get much, and maybe a month later, you repost and you get a flood of applicants, and I'm, like, you know, it's just, the timing can be quirky. So I think we do have, we have been getting more applications in. I haven't reviewed them, but I know we're, we're down on minibus drivers. That's an important role to fill as well.
And for secretary?
We're working on that. That's, as I said...
Anybody respond?
Yeah, I've, I have...
Last time, you said no.
I have an individual who has actually referred to me by a colleague in another community who had a similar opening that they filled. So she sent me some of the folks who had applied, so trying to connect, but... Yeah. For whatever reason, the part-time board secretary roles are very challenging as well.
I know you and Kristin worked very hard on updating the role of the assistant of the director and kind of expanded it for Stephanie's position. Was it ready to go, or did you have to revise it?
I need to, we'll look at that. So a couple things. That position is, I, we, I believe before Stephanie was hired, we did update that position. We do, as a matter of course, we review the positions anytime they become open. And that position is covered by one of our bargaining units, though, so sometimes there's a little bit different implications in terms of the ability to...
Okay, so Saturday, February 1st is her last day. That's like tomorrow, apparently.
So we're going to be short two people as of February 2nd. Is it, not likely you are the director by then, right?
Oh, God.
No, I mean, down three people. The bus driver.
So I think that's it on staffing dates. I was just trying to think about any home stuff.
Just curious, based on Guido's comment, are there, I mean, obviously the concern over the positions being available, you know, open now or vacant. But are there any concerns February 2nd on? I'm just curious about the, I mean, as far as major activities that are being planned?
That will work with staff. I mean, they have things pretty well mapped out. They've actually, one of the things I do want to mention, I know you had updates last month from both Stephanie and Mary Ellen. I think everyone was very impressed. They have really stepped up. The programming is going great. Kristin, I don't know if you've all noticed, and hopefully you're actually receiving it in the mail, but the newsletter is getting done in advance of the month starting, and I believe from arriving in mailboxes.
Not only that, Kim, also, it's so well organized, because all the ads are on the left, the actual information's on the right. It's so easy to read through it.
Yeah, so I think they're really good. Yeah, not to minimize being down staffed, but I just, I wanted to acknowledge the work that they've all been doing and the things that they've been able to put in place and expand. And we continue to try to also offer, in where it makes sense, if we need to add programming over at the community center because of space limitations here. We don't have that constraint anymore of, oh, I've got a great program, a great instructor who approached me, but I have no place to host them. Mary Ellen is able to make use of space over at the community center, working closely with the director. Okay. Mary Ellen did have a couple of new programs. Did you, I was, I know we have, one of the items is updates and upcoming events, so I can wrap her.
Two things. I was glad to bring up the SMART program last month. Stephanie mentioned that the funding has been lowered and that she's getting more applications, so...
For what?
The oil, fuel assistance program, SMART.
It's run through SMART, yep.
Yeah. Is there an update on that, and how are we going to handle it once the company's gone?
So we have, through our contract with Tricia Youth and Family and staff in Youth and Family, we have other resources in town that can help with those applications. And I also talked to her about the timing of it, and she thinks that she's through kind of a big push in terms of those applications.
I know she's been working on it a lot.
Yeah, I think that's up by the state in terms of the funding, so.
The other thing, on the programs, I was wondering when we might start seeing statistics again. We used to get statistics on, you know, from the kiosk there.
One of the other things Kristin has done in the past month or so, she's worked through support services at my senior center to better understand some of the functionality that we hadn't been tapping into. So I expect we'd start to be able to issue some better reporting as we go forward. So I think one of the things we found when we were working on the budget document, in fact, and we're looking for some of the performance measures, there were some numbers in question. So she was able to kind of, with help from the support team at my senior center, get the backend set up more correctly, if you will, so that we are actually tracking things that we want to be tracking, or when the data gets spit out, we actually know what it means.
I trust it. Alan never trusted the data. It was officially lowered things and...
I think some of that is a function of how things were captured and how it was set up on the backend. So I think we've, as we move forward, we'll, yeah, so. And obviously, I think we have a particular interest as we now are spanning two locations, being able to make sure we're not losing things that are happening outside of this building. So that's all part of, and again, this ties back into the action plan of the senior needs assessment to better utilize my senior center, to better track and understand participation and where, where resources and interests lie.
Is there any time period or whatever that my senior center would be available at the other?
Yeah, we've talked about, while the kiosk isn't available, we can use an online version. And I think we're going to try to tap into some staff support over in the building to make sure that it's not on program instructors to sign people in. Yeah, yeah. The ASC did come up, if we could add a second kiosk, so people could just scan the tag. It's about a $5,000 initial investment, and we don't have funding at the moment for that. So I think we do have the ability to use through the online system to have people register. There might be, might not be as handy as just scanning your key tag, but we can get some, we're talking about getting some staff support. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
People feel a little bit more like we're part of...
Yes. Yeah, that's come up.
So Kim, how much of the square footage will the library need? And how will that affect the senior center programs going forward?
So right now, the plan contemplates the library only using, using primarily the lower level. And it's not yet determined exactly how they will set up in there. And some of this is timing, but they have also identified that if, if the senior center, if the Phase One work were to commence before they're able to get back into the library, if you, if you look on the drawings, there's sort of a natural line where there would be a construction wall installed. They've identified that they believe the space on the backside would be sufficient for them to operate out of. So I think that, that, none of that has been determined yet, but those conversations have happened.
Which is the future build-out section.
Yes. Yeah, which I believe is over 10,000 square feet, so, yeah.
And just one note to absolutely write everything she said. I would just said that one of the discussions that came up in the meeting last week was also there are three potential entrances to... was also there are three potential entrances to that library area. And what one, and that's kind of, the architects kind of, kind of take back the feedback and they come up with a solution as to what is going to be the most appropriate way to get into that library area, if in fact it is that back area. So just one.
That's true.
If you didn't see, if you didn't see the presentation.
Do you have any program or service dates for us? Or do you want me to go have Mary Ellen join?
I can go get Mary Ellen, see if she wants to just highlight. I think she had a couple, I know coming up as we get into February, I think there are a couple of your...
Pass them around.
Yeah, pass them around.
Pass them around.
Or you can throw them.
Yeah, we've been envious of them all day.
Well, then we wouldn't eat more than one.
Well, that's true.
I, I want to make sure it's not old.
Right, right.
Because it's stale, right?
It's been there for a while.
No, I had, actually, I had Hershey Kisses before I came here. So I had my chocolate still already.
Oh, Christian, I love you. You can put them on the table down hall where everybody... Hello, Mary Ellen.
Hi, Mary Ellen.
Hello, Mary Ellen.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Am I reading mine up?
You're up.
You're up.
Okay, so we have this trip that, I think Paula, did you sign up?
I did.
I, I, I hope that people can help me with this because there's only four people signed up, and I need 20. It is Funny Girls in Boston. It's at the Boston Opera House on February 15th. The trip has a lunch at the Cheesecake Factory, a matinee performance at Funny Girl, and a round-trip transportation. It's pricey. It's $204, but you'll love it. So let's try to push this trip. We are starting up a chess club. I have a volunteer that wants to be part of it. He's going to organize it, teach people how to play. So that is in the works. Kristen put it in the newsletter. The men's club is in process, not quite firmed up, but it's getting there. I have Metro West Legal Services coming in to do an informational service on February 20th to discuss what is available to people that people might not even know is available to them.
So what, Metro West what?
Metro West Legal Services, yes. I have a new volunteer that is free of charge, that is going to teach a mind, body, and soul-like yoga class. She wants no money. She wants to give back to the community. Meditation, Reiki healing, and yoga. So this is probably going to be Tuesdays at 1:00. I just have to firm up her schedule, but it is free to the public, obviously to seniors. I have Medical Alert coming in on March 11th. I just firmed this up. She's going to do an informational on what Medical Alert is used for, how it works. There's different types. We're going to have light snacks and refreshments, Q and A session. So this is, this is happening. I'm sorry, February 11th at 1:00. I mean, I'm sorry, March, March 11th. Thank you. Yes. I have Galbani and Flower Shop coming in again. They're going to do a rustic box in time for Valentine's Day. Most likely $45, like the last flowers that they did, but they do a good job.
What date is that one?
This is going to be February 6th at 11:00. And I know I talked about the Valentine's lunch that we're going to have. It's actually more like a dinner, but it's at lunchtime. There's a family in Westboro that has donated all the cost of the food. They want to pay the bill. And, yep, so we're probably going to have to cap it if it goes crazy. But, you know, probably, there could be 100 people, who knows? And we're doing an optional free photo shoot with another free volunteer that is covering the cost of all the pictures. With a permission slip signed, you can have a photo with your loved one.
What time is that?
So the photos will be from 1:00 to 2:00, and the lunch starts at 12:00.
What was the date?
February 14th.
Oh, it's on Valentine's Day.
And I think that's really it. Kristen's doing a great job pulling me into Alma's office, getting things into the newsletter early.
Yeah, that's lovely. Great and early.
Yeah, so that's, I think, about all I have to share. And it's, and most of it is free. I mean, a lot of people are stepping up that want to volunteer their turn.
I appreciate you, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now our last title, Google of the 79th year.
Well, I had a comment, but others may have comments as well. I think in your handout, Diane, I sent my comment to Diane, and she already has offered a, a change, which was the highlighted section. Basically, Kim, this was what Christie had talked about. And I believe Diane had gotten it backwards, that she was saying that the minutes that were sent out stated that there would be, senior center costs would be on the March warrant for approval. And that's definitely was not what was said. And about the pool, she said it will not be on the warrant, but that will be on the warrant as that, as you just mentioned a little while ago. So she came up with a correction, and that's what's in yellow.
And this is accurate?
And this is correct. Yeah. That's the change that, that she, you know, that we recommended those making. Does anyone else have anything else?
Are there any other changes or corrections to the minutes?
In that case, I make a motion that we accept the minute with the changes as identified.
Can I second it?
All those in favor, show of hands, please. Motion's been moved, minutes. We send this thing back to the council. You look like you're going to explode now.
No, I'm just still recuperating from a very, very bad fall.
Our next meeting will be February 10th.
February 10th.
Oh, next meeting.
Patrick, thank you for coming and being with our group.
Absolutely.
It's appreciated.
Enjoy it. Good to see everyone.
May I have a motion to adjutant in the meeting? Second?
Second.
All those in favor, show of hands.